Good evening. The executive session of the Wayne Board of Education regular meeting of May 20th, 2021 was convened virtually and hosted in the media center of Anthony Wayne Middle School, 201 Gardside Avenue, Wayne, New Jersey. The statement of compliance setting forth time, date, and location was read in accordance with the requirements of the Open Public Meetings Act, and the roll call was taken. The meeting was recessed and is now being reconvened. Please rise for a flag salute.
Fudge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay. All right. Can I get a mover to reconvene? Mr. Giordano, Mrs. Scher, roll call, Mrs. Lydic.
Mrs. Albanese?
Here.
Mr. Bubba?
Here.
Mr. Duffy?
Here.
Mr. Giordano?
Here.
Mrs. Kazan?
Here.
Mrs. Kumar?
Here.
Mr. Pavlak?
Here.
Mrs. Putup?
Here.
And Mr. Scher?
Here.
Here.
Turn things over to you, Mrs. Reichman.
Good evening, everyone. Dr. Toback is unable to be here tonight. I am here in his place. I'd like to start the meeting by recognizing our outgoing PTO presidents. As valued members of our community, you have helped to make a difference by giving your considerable time and talents to our schools. I would like to acknowledge your outstanding contributions. You're all PTO presidents, but all of you have served for many years as members of the PTO, working tirelessly in support of the schools. Please know that what you do each and every day to support the children is never taken for granted, and the board appreciates your efforts in improving the Wayne Township Public Schools. Every board meeting is a testimony to the generosity of the PTO in that we regularly accept donations that enhance the educational experiences of our students. We are grateful for your leadership in the community. The Board of Education will be recognizing you with an award that has been delivered to your school's main office for pickup there. At this time, I would like to individually announce and recognize each PTO school president, starting with A.P. Terhune, Erin Pistone, Packenac Elementary School, Methalda Halligan, Heinz Lake Elementary School, Michelle Severett, Ryerson Elementary School, Anthony Filaramo, Anthony Wayne Middle School, Stacy Nissen, George Washington Middle School, Joanne Diorio, Skylar Colfax Middle School, Melissa Canizaro, Wayne Hills High School, Eileen D'Amico, Wayne Valley High School, Jill Spodek, and Wayne Valley High School, Jenny Franklin. Thank you to all of you. Additionally, I would also like to recognize our outgoing student representatives. I believe just Gina is with us tonight, and we will pass this along to Joseph Afwell. The purpose of student representatives is to serve as a liaison between the governing body of the school district and high school students. The Wayne Board of Education has a long history of including two students, one from each high school, as student representatives to the board. The representatives this year include Joseph Kabafcek from Wayne Hills and Gina Fermi from Wayne Valley. We are proud to have had both students attend our Board of Ed meetings, and we certainly recognize their commitment and dedication to our schools and community. Gina and Joseph sacrifice time every other Thursday evening to selflessly attend our Board of Education meetings and keep our communities informed. We wish both Joseph and Gina continued success in their future endeavors. Next year, Joseph will be attending Hamilton College and studying biology on the pre-med track. Gina will be attending Williams College in the fall, where she hopes to study international relations and anthropology. The Board of Education will be recognizing each of you with an award that has been delivered to your schools and can be received in your school principal's office. Congratulations to all.
Thank you, Ms. Reichman. At this time, if any of the board members want to comment, Mrs. Albanese.
I wanted to also add my congratulations and my thanks to the PTO presidents. We know the countless hours, the tremendous amount of time that you give to running your PTOs. We want to thank you, your officer boards, and all of your chair people, because you really do make a difference every day in the life of every student and staff member in your building. So, thank you very much for all that you do. I want to congratulate the two student representatives and thank you for your contributions to the meetings. It's always a wonderful part of the meeting to really hear what goes on at our two high schools and get a little glimpse into the life of what an average high school student is doing each and every day. So, thank you for bringing that each time to the meeting. Thank you.
Anyone else? Okay, I'll just make a quick comment. I want to thank all the PTO presidents and your executive boards for all you do for our students. I know firsthand how much time and energy goes into these positions on top of everything else parents already have on their plate. What you do for our students is important and appreciated, not just by the board, but by the students and their families. Wayne is such a wonderful community to raise a family, and you're certainly one of the reasons why. Thank you all. And to our student representatives, I want to thank you both for your service to the board this year. We enjoyed your reports and updates on all the wonderful activities at each high school. I wish you both the best in your next chapter, and we couldn't be more proud of you. Having you here at our meetings has been a nice reminder of why we all do this, especially this year when we haven't seen anyone in person. Thank you both, and good luck. Okay. Mrs. Reichman? Back to you.
The state of New Jersey dedicates the second week of May to Special Education Week. During Special Education Week, we recognize and celebrate the many achievements of our students with disabilities. During this past year of hybrid learning, we have seen many of our students work extra hard to adapt to the new ways of learning. While this was certainly very different, we're so proud of our students and teachers for rising to the occasion. Watching our students continue to learn, grow, and thrive in the most difficult of situations is just another indication of their resilience and perseverance when it comes to their individual growth and commitment to maximize their achievement in our schools. Two seniors from our automotive technology program at Wayne Township High Schools recently took home the top prize at Universal Technical Institute Top Tech Challenge. Congratulations to James Lay and Ryan McVey, who each earned a full scholarship to Universal Technical Institute, and to our two district automotive instructors, Ken Bergen and Steve Hopper, who lead this premier program for our district. Our nationally certified automotive technology program received a trophy and a specially-designed toolbox with the latest in technology and tools. Congratulations to all. Last week, we launched a thought exchange at Wayne Valley High School. All Wayne Valley students, Wayne Valley parents, incoming freshmen and their parents, and Wayne Valley alumni were invited to participate. The thought exchange was announced on our website and all social media channels with a link to access the thought exchange and participate in the discussion. A full report is being compiled, and the outcome of the exchange will be presented at our June 10th board meeting, when we will be joined by Tamika Reese, our district consultant for diversity, equity, and inclusion. Now that the weather is getting warmer, we've received some questions from elementary parents about the mask mandate for students during the school day. School districts are required to follow the masking guidelines for schools that are detailed in the Governor's Executive Orders 241 and 175. Students and staff are still required to wear masks at school, except when doing so when inhibit the individual's health, and when the individual is eating or drinking, when the individual is exposed to extreme heat outdoors, and when the individual is engaged in high-intensity aerobic or anaerobic activities. Recently, we opened our playgrounds for after-school use. After further consultation today with the Department of Health, beginning on June 2nd, our playgrounds will reopen for use during the school day. Students will sanitize their hands pre and post-play, and there will be periodic surface cleaning. To maintain the safest environment possible while adhering to the distancing guidelines, a rotating playground schedule will be established during the snack periods to avoid having too many students on the playground equipment at any given time. Since mask-wearing is a mitigation strategy for the prevention of COVID spread, on extremely hot days when mask-wearing isn't advisable, the students will not be able to use playground equipment. While COVID is still being reported in the district, we're thrilled to report that very few cases have been reported these past two weeks. For HIB, I'm reporting the following data related to harassment, intimidation, and bullying incidents in the Wayne Township Public School District. There was one incident investigated since my last report, and that case was not deemed to be in the category of HIB. And this concludes my report. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Reichman. Speaking of student representatives, I believe we have Gina here this evening to give our Wayne Valley report.
Hi, thank you so much for having me again. Congratulations to the Boys and Girls Spring Track Team for a third-place finish in the Valley co-ed relays. Wayne Valley gave a valiant performance at the track, placing first in the 4x1600 and second in pole vault, discus and 4x400. Great job to seniors Samantha Navendorf on going four-for-four with four runs and three RBIs to lead Wayne Valley's softball team to a win over West Milford. Senior Gianna Lamorges added four hits and three RBIs, and pitcher Gabby Perez had 10Ks on the day. Boys tennis picked up their third win in a row with a 3-2 victory over West Milford. Rafi Medali and one at first singles, 6-3, and Valley's first doubles team of Mahir Mistry and Seed Abunamas continued to shine with a 6-0 win. Great job. The class of 2021 is enjoying their junior formal at the Grande's Outdoor Venue as I speak. Special thanks to the Junior Student Council Officers and their advisors for organizing this event. The Wayne Valley Percussion Ensemble performed virtually in the annual Necessary Noise Festival hosted by Mantra Percussion. Over 20 ensembles were also involved, and the event was a resounding success. Great job to the Wayne Valley Student Dance Association on their two successful shows with the theme Road Trip USA. Over 200 people were in virtual attendance, and all girls involved did a phenomenal job. Special recognition is in order for White Team overall Emily Krasowski and Blue Team overall Chloe Wright. Great job to all. The month of May brings AP season to Wayne Valley students and staff. This year, students have the option of taking a traditional paper copy exam or virtual exam provided by the College Board. All have been working hard and studying in preparation for these exams, which in and of itself is quite the accomplishment. Good luck to all on the quest for the five. And to conclude, I just wanted to express my gratitude to the board and to all of Wayne's school administrators for the opportunity to be able to serve as the student leads on this year and in the past year as well. It's really been an honor to be able to present all of Wayne Valley's student accomplishments here, and I've really learned so much, and I can only hope to emulate the same professionalism, empathy, and problem-solving that I see each week, well, each month at these meetings and in between as well, as I enter my future academics and career. So, thank you again.
Thank you so much, Gina. I don't know if you're watching, but the board's all applauding you. We've enjoyed having you this past year and last year. You're quite an amazing student, and you've impressed us all.
Thank you, I appreciate it.
Thank you. We're gonna miss you. Suzanne, you're gonna read our Wayne Hills report. Unfortunately, Joseph couldn't make it this evening.
Sorry you couldn't be here this evening, Joseph, but thank you for the report. Wayne Hills High School is ranked number one in Passaic County for the New Jersey Math League and was recognized as one of only 36 high-scoring schools in the state of New Jersey. Jacob Hablitz was Wayne Hills' top scorer and instrumental throughout the competition and was recognized as one of only 50 high-scoring students in this whole state. NJML is coached by Wayne Hills' math teacher, Mr. Todd Green. Congratulations Quiz Bowl team, ranking number one in New Jersey and on to the Nationals. The Wayne Hills Symphonic Band, Jazz Band, and Ensembles will be performing a live spring concert on Thursday, June 3rd, starting at 6:30 behind Wayne Hills High School. This event will be hosted by the WHHS Chapter of TRIM, the National Music Honor Society. Audience members are asked to bring their own lawn chairs and observe all applicable CDC and school guidelines. The resilience of our band members has been incredible this year. Now come and enjoy their talents and musicality. This spring, the Wayne Hills High School Photo Program partnered with Sunrise Assisted Living to create a gallery for its residents. Photo three students selected their favorite nature photos, which were then displayed in the common areas of the nursing home. The feedback received from the Sunrise Assisted Living facility was wonderful. The residents enjoyed seeing the work our students created, while our students were thrilled to have their work provide such a pleasant experience for the community. On Wednesday, May 12th, the Wayne Hills Girls Golf Team participated in a match at Preakness Valley Golf Club, and Samantha Flynn came in first place, and Alexander Schmidt came in second. Congratulations, students. Thank you. Thank you, Joseph.
Thank you for pinch hitting, Mrs. Putup. Okay, revisions to the agenda, Ms. Lydic?
Revisions are as followed. Under T Emergent Human Resources, item one, approval of leave requests. Revised number two, change dates to May 19th, 2021 p.m. to June 28th, 2021. Item two, approval of additional compensation. Numbers 11 and 12, six-period assignment, change start date from April 1, 2021 to May 10th, 2021. Add number 18, Anita Dispenzari, nurse for Unified Sports Events District, May 1, 2021 through June 23rd, 2021. $53.13 an hour, up to seven events. Account number 11, 401, 100, 117, 045. Item 10, approval of extracurricular athletic workers. Add number three, Pedro Crespo, Wayne Hills. Number four, Joan Brothers, Wayne Hills. Under X Emergent School Resource Legal, add one, resolves that the Board of Education, upon the recommendation of the superintendent, hereby approves the settlement agreement and general release in the matter, docket number PAS/L/803/19 in the Superior Court, Passaic County Law Division, as attached by reference, and further authorizes the Board President and Secretary to execute same on behalf of the Board. The business administrator and superintendent are authorized to take all further steps required by the terms of the settlement to further implement same. That concludes the revisions.
Okay, thank you very much. Moving on to our first public portion. This portion of the meeting is open to citizens for comment on agenda items only. Residents are to state their names, addresses, and subject matter. Comments may be limited to five minutes per person. Members of the public are discouraged from speaking negatively about an employee or a student. The Board bears no responsibility for comments made by the public. Comments regarding employees or students cannot be legally responded to by the Board. Other comments may be responded to tonight or at subsequent meetings under Old Business. Can I get a mover? Mr. Giordano, Mrs. Kumar.
Hi, I was wondering if, in relation to the June 10th meeting, would this be the public portion to speak at? Or would that be the second?
If we're making a presentation, it's part of the meeting.
Okay. Thank you.
I'm sorry.
I'll wait for the second public portion, my apologies.
Madam President, see no hands raised. Thy move to close.
I'll second.
Mr. Pavlak? Mr. Duffy? I'm sorry, I thought she was asking about the next meeting, but no, it's not on tonight's meeting either. Okay, let's move on to committee reports. I'd like to go first. Mr. Giordano?
Good evening. The Personnel Committee met tonight. Chairperson is myself, and attendance was also Ms. Stacy Scher, Ms. Susan Putup, Paula Clark, and of course, Ms. Cheryl Lydic and Donna Reichman. Several personnel items were discussed. The ones we can mention in public is, we looked at substitute rates. We also looked at revising some job descriptions that are coming up in the future. We also went over a review for board policy for the future also, and that is the stuff we could discuss from the Personnel Meeting. Thank you.
Thank you. Who's next? Mr. Pavlak?
Facilities Committee and Transportation met this evening. Myself, Mrs. Kazan, Mr. Moffitt, Mr. Blanchard, and Mr. Skavitsky. We reviewed all agenda items for tonight's meeting. Facility-wise, the boilers that are ancient at Wayne Valley are finally being replaced. That process will be ongoing over the summer. As you heard from Mrs. Reichman, our playgrounds will be opening. They've all been inspected by our insurance carrier and any few minor tweaks we took care of, and we discussed the cleaning of the equipment as well. The Transportation Department is evaluating its organizational chart, which will be brought up at the next meeting. We're looking for bus drivers, and we're looking for bus aides. We have a need to fill these positions. We run a very, very large operation, and we really are in need of people for the next school year. Our bus inspections have concluded, and congratulations to everyone in the Transportation Department, our mechanics, Rich, everybody, for a phenomenal job. The failure rate for the state Department of Transportation when they come in to do a bus inspection for a school district is about 70%. We were at zero. We had no failures. That is a phenomenal, phenomenal feat with the amount of buses we have, the hours and miles they're on the road. To everyone in our Transportation Department, thank you. That concludes my report.
Thank you for all that good news, Mr. Pavlak. Mrs. Putup?
Reports. The first is for the Policy Committee that met on Tuesday afternoon, February 17th, with Mr. Moffitt, our business administrator, Ms. Lydic, our assistant business administrator, Mrs. Kazan, Mr. Giordano, and myself. We discussed several items. Gifts, grants, and donations, conflicts of interest, Bylaw 0167 regarding public participation. We discussed guidelines and a handbook for the booster clubs, which also included a brief discussion on advertising on school property. And we also discussed review for policies for gifts, grants, and donations. Thank you. My second report is for the Finance Committee that met this afternoon at 4 o'clock, with Mr. Moffitt, Ms. Lydic, Mrs. Kazan, Mr. Pavlak, and myself. Items on the agenda to be reviewed were transportation agreements and contracts for 2021 to 2022, a discussion of medical, dental, and prescription analysis, donations to the district, disposable obsolete equipment, a review of the check register. We briefly discussed the lack of state guidance on Chapter 44. We had a grant update including and regarding CARES Act, also known as ESER, and other federal funds. We received an update on our unemployment claims. However, information we need has not been forthcoming from the state of New Jersey. We also talked about what would be required to close out our current budget year, revenue accruals, and final payroll and final invoices. And that information should be coming in June. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Putup. Does anyone else have a report this evening? Okay, that concludes our committee reports. Let's move on to the agenda. Get a mover?
Madam President, I would move the entire agenda as one item.
Second. Thank you, Mr. Pavlak. Second by Mrs. Scher. Is that you? Discussion. Does anyone have a comment on an agenda item or question? No? Roll call, Mrs. Lydic?
Mr. Bubba?
Yes.
Mr. Duffy?
Yes.
Mr. Giordano?
Yes.
Mrs. Kumar?
Yes.
Mr. Pavlak?
Yes, and under item O, School Resource Finance, I'll abstain on item 10 and 11. Yes, everything helps.
Mrs. Putup?
Yes.
Mrs. Scher?
Yes.
Mrs. Albanese?
Yes.
Mrs. Kazan?
Yes.
Well?
Motion carries.
Thank you very much. Get comfortable, everyone. We're about to read a very large number of retirements, and well-deserved by our staff. So, I'll start with you, Mr. Pavlak.
I'd like to first, Diane May. Miss May will hang up her bio lab expertise after 10 years at Skylar Colfax. Mrs. May worked tirelessly to provide academic excellence for her students and prepare them for the demands of high school and beyond. Mrs. May enjoyed telling stories in her classroom with her students and laughing together. Her lessons created excitement among her students and kept them on their toes and curious. At the same time, they enjoyed fun and laughs through their labs on Thursday morning. Her eighth-grade friends will miss her, lunchtime humor, and good times sharing stories of her grandchildren and her family. All the best for a happy, healthy retirement with your family. Orseen Surigliano, Mrs. Surigliano, formerly known as the Skylar Colfax Princess Nurse, will be retiring her Band-Aid responsibilities after 15 years. Mrs. Surigliano's claim, calm and caring approach, brings many frequent flyers to her doorsteps every day, whether they be staff or students, and each one she takes the time to listen, nurture, and care for. Her walkie-talkie with its princess crown hums all day with busy nature of her job and the reckless task she provides. Mrs. Surigliano meets each one with a smile and a sense of humor. We will miss her contributions to INRS, and her lunch buddies will miss her stories and sense of humor. Best of all, all things to come in your retirement, and much health and happiness with your move down the shore.
Thank you, Mr. Pavlak. Mrs. Albanese?
Thank you. I have two to read tonight. Joanne Cirillo has been a valued member of the Wayne Valley Counseling Department for 15 years. Throughout Mrs. Cirillo's time, she has always been a caring, insightful, and hard-working advocate for the students and families she has worked with. The college application process and navigating through a student's senior year of high school can often be difficult. However, Mrs. Cirillo has helped so many students and families feel confident in making difficult decisions about their futures. Mrs. Cirillo has made a positive impact as a counselor, as well as in her time as a swimming coach. Regardless of her role, she's provided the necessary support, guidance, and encouragement for all students. Whether it be coordinating- Mrs. Cirillo will be missed by colleagues, administrators, families, but most importantly, by her students. For her dedication, professionalism, and her willingness to help others, an enormous thank you to Mrs. Cirillo on behalf of the entire Wayne Valley High School community. We wish her the very best of luck and enjoyment as she embarks upon her retirement journey. On a personal note, Joanne and I have been friends since our children were young swimmers on the Wayne Waves swim team. She's a wonderful mother to her two daughters and golf partner to her husband Pete. Joanne is that rare type of friend who has the incredible ability to always be there when you need someone to talk to, or even to just sit quietly if needed. Her kindness and compassion for others is evident in everything she does, and her many close friends, both professional and personal, are fortunate to call her a friend. The second one I'm privileged to read tonight is for Bruce Keogh. Mr. Keogh, and that's how he's known, has many accolades to support a resounding recognition of approval and thanks for his work during his tenure here at Wayne Hills High School. His involvement in the whole of our community was broadened many years ago as Coach Keogh took on the important role of leading our boys' and girls' tennis programs and girls' bowling team. During his many seasons leading our sports program, he has dozens of successful seasons that are affirmed with many consecutive Passaic County titles, seasons of Passaic County titles and related awards. However, none of those achievements even can begin to compare to his character. His goal each day is to do his best for his players, students, program, and the entire school. His boundless energy and passion was self-evident each and every day. We thank you, Mr. Keogh, for being the consummate professional, and wish all the best to a great man. Mr. Keogh, we wish all the best to you and your wonderful family as you start your next chapter. You will be sorely missed in the halls of Wayne Hills by students, staff, and parents alike. Thank you on behalf of the many, many students you have helped to guide and shape and see the adults we are all so proud of today. Thank you, and congratulations to both of you.
Thank you, Mrs. Albanese. Mr. Giordano.
Yes, thank you very much. I have two to read tonight. The first one is Mr. Fred Ayers. Mr. Ayers has dedicated the last 18 years of his life to his seventh-grade science students. There is no doubt when Mr. Ayers pulls into the school parking lot in the morning with a loud rumble of his motorcycle and the distinct sound of his cowboy boots walking down the halls. Mr. Ayers, AKA the real Bill Nye, the Science Guy, has been engaging his students with the incredible magic of his science prowess while also cultivating their love for the Beatles and all things rock and roll. His sound and lighting career before teaching has benefited Skylar Colfax innumerable all-school productions and assemblies, and will be a significant loss when we stare at the ceiling to see his way from the audio booth. His commitment to his students is palpable, and his love for teaching and kids can be felt as soon as you enter his rather cluttered but homey science lab in Corridor A. We wish you all health and happiness in your retirement and the next leg of your journey. Don't forget to keep us up to date on your adventures in Cape Cod. Next, we have Mr. Bruce Lemkin. Mr. Lemkin has served all Wayne students at both Wayne Valley and Wayne Hills and our Technology Department. Teaching is a craft, and Mr. Lemkin tried each year to improve his own knowledge to share with his students. He always searched for industry standards in computer-aided design, otherwise known as CAD, such as SolidWorks, integrating virtual reality into the design process, or having students design shovel-ready building designs for his other passion, the Boy Scout camp called Noby Bosco. Students returning from college consistently thanked Mr. Lemkin for not just preparing them for college-level design courses, but for advancing the knowledgeability to the junior or senior level of college. We wish him well in his retirement. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Giordano. Mrs. Scher.
Okay, so tonight I have two retirements. Patricia Rashardi. Patricia Pat Rashardi originally worked in Patterson for 32 years as a speech therapist, classroom teacher of the deaf, and inten- inten- intenerant teacher of the deaf. She taught sign language classes to students, parents, and city workers. After her successful tenure in Patterson, she moved on to Wayne. Ms. Rashardi has been a part of the Wayne Township Public Schools community since May of 2015 as the district's only teacher of the deaf. Over the years, she has developed strong relationships with the Wayne students and their families that she works with. When not working with students, teachers, or families, she can be found working collaboratively with the Assistive Technology Team. We have full confidence that Ms. Rashardi will be filling her time bargain-hunting, expanding her impressive culinary talents, enjoying long walks with her dog, Trooper, and spending quality time with her actively-expanding family. She will be well missed. And then the next one I have is for Ms. Nancy Linden. She has been working for the Wayne Township Public School District since September of 1994. As a social worker, she has worked on various child study teams and has worked in every Wayne school except for Pines Lake and Wayne Valley High School. She has spent the last number of years on the James Fallon, JFK, and Pakenak Elementary Schools child study teams. Ms. Linden has been engaged with Wayne staff, parents, and students. She shares personal experiences to help the parents become more comfortable with making educational decisions for their children. She always had a wealth of knowledge about resources, specialists, and programs available for students with disabilities. Throughout her time in Wayne, she has made strong relationships within the community, including out-of-district placements that benefited Wayne students and families. She has a career full of memories and has touched a lot of lives along the way. We are sure that her retirement will be well-spent with her children and grandchildren. Congratulations to everybody.
Thank you, Mrs. Scher. Mrs. Kumar?
Hi. So, Ms. Eleanor Virdoin. Ms. Virdoin has served the community of Wayne as a special education mathematics teacher. Her dedication to her students was evident every day in her classroom and hallways of Wayne Hills High School. Ms. Virdoin always placed students first and displayed an extraordinary talent for instructing our special education population. Her teaching ability, rapport with students, and professional attitude will be greatly missed. We wish her all the best on a well-deserved retirement after over 27 years of service to students. She was always someone who smiled and was willing to help anyone in the hallway, whether she really knew them or not. She was just a great coworker. And then Kathleen Bolzer. Kathleen Bolzer has been a valued member of the Wayne Valley community for 17 years. Throughout her time, Ms. Bolzer has taught a variety of classes and done so with a high level of professionalism, success, and empathy. As a member of the Mathematics Department, Ms. Bolzer always has been willing to participate in new initiatives and pilots of various programs. Ms. Bolzer has a strong work ethic. She is a team player. She is well-liked and respected by her colleagues, administration, students, and parents. Through her years at Wayne Valley, Ms. Bolzer has always prepared her students for the rigor and concepts which are required in all levels of courses, and her students always found success. Another example of Ms. Bolzer's dedication to both students and schools, most recently when she took a leadership role in creating a curriculum for a senior-level mathematics elective course that carries dual enrollment credit. This course is needed, and Ms. Bolzer has done an outstanding job of working collaboratively and leading the development of it with her colleagues. During the past two years, Ms. Bolzer has done a fantastic job of implementing the curriculum and working with students in the class. Ms. Bolzer will be missed by her colleagues, administrators, families, and most importantly, her students. For her support to fellow colleagues, the attention and enthusiasm of her teaching, and overall impact to the Wayne Valley community, and a huge thank you. We want to wish Ms. Bolzer health, happiness, and good fortune as she takes the next steps in retirement.
Thank you, Mrs. Kumar. Mrs. Putup.
I'd like to read a retirement information for Erin Waka. We are here today to show our respect and love for Erin Waka, who has spent 17 years supporting students and programs as a paraprofessional. During her tenure, she has served in the capacity of a one-to-one, shared a classroom LPN paraprofessional. Erin has touched many lives along the way, including fellow colleagues, teachers, families, and most importantly, students. She always puts students first and treats all with kindness and respect. Erin has excellent attendance and has always provided consistency and diligence to all her assignments. Erin, you will be missed. Wayne Township Public Schools wishes you good luck in future endeavors. Enjoy your retirement with your family. Thank you. Barbara Barty. Barbara began her tenure at Wayne Valley High School in January of 2000 as Secretary to the Media Center Specialist. Two years later, in September of 2002, Barbara enthusiastically moved into the role of Media Center Specialist. Since that time, she has been a valuable resource source to students and staff. Barbara has always collaborated with teachers, whether she was planning a freshman orientation or identifying resources needed for a class project or research paper. When staff and students began attending school virtually last March, Barbara was an invaluable resource. She offered small-group training on technology platforms as well as individual support. Across departments, Barbara also researched electronic resources that could assist teachers and students. Her dedication continued to our current hybrid instruction. Barbara is back in the media center, ensuring that any resource needed is available. When she is not in the media center, she is in a classroom supporting teachers and students with various projects. In her spare time, Barbara is an avid reader and enjoys puzzles. She and her husband love to see Broadway shows and travel. Administration and staff would like to sincerely thank Barbara for her contributions to our school. We wish her all the best as she begins the next chapter. May it be filled with many Broadway shows and exciting destinations. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Bubba.
Thank you, Mrs. Kazan. The first one I have tonight is for Neil Ashoney. Mr. Ashoney is retiring after 26 years of service to students and the community. During his tenure at Wayne Hills, Neil was a guiding force for the Computer Science Program. He successfully introduced new courses to ensure our students were on the forefront of the field. Mr. Ashoney was also instrumental in students receiving many awards through the American Computer Science League. His depth of knowledge, ability to enrich the curriculum, and ensuring students were prepared to take on collegiate computer science courses will be missed. We wish him well as he embarks on the next chapter of his life. And my second one I have tonight is for Mr. Chris Heinbachel. Prior to coming to the Wayne School District as the tech education teacher at Anthony Wayne Middle School in 2009, Mr. Heinbachel worked in the financial sector, being responsible for finance organization communication and investment management. Deciding to venture into a brand-new career, Mr. Heinbachel worked as a daily substitute teacher and a long-term substitute teacher. Using his teaching certificate and Teacher of Technology Education earned years before, Mr. Heinbachel started at Anthony Wayne Middle School, started the 2009-2010 school year, and earned tenure on September 1st, 2012. Active in all aspects of the school community, Mr. Heinbachel chaperoned the annual eighth-grade class trip to Washington D.C. In addition, he would be seen at most canteen socials, musicals, and other school events serving as a chaperone. A source of great pride for Mr. Heinbachel and our overall school community, he began the Robotics Club, which was well-subscribed, annually enjoyed by all. The safety of every child in the tech ed classes while using equipment and materials was always his primary concern, and he is commended for having always insisted on safe and orderly procedures during tech ed class. His students learn so much more than the curriculum and content standards that were addressed during his classes. Much more than just a tech ed teacher, Mr. Heinbachel will be missed. On behalf of the Anthony Wayne Middle School learning community, we wish him many years of good health and happiness in retirement, and congratulations to all the retirees tonight.
Thank you, Mr. Bubba. Mr. Duffy?
Good evening. My first retirement is for Catherine Eck. Nurse Eck has been the essential contributor to the health and well-being of our students and faculty here at Wayne Hills High School, and in her earlier days in our elementary schools. In the past year, however, her gentle and thorough approach has been all more felt as the unprecedented health crisis necessitated an ever-increasing need for support. Catherine engaged students and parents, in addition to the whole of our staff, with clarity, concern, and great comfort. Catherine served our Wayne community through her attendance at band camps, field trips, SDA, athletics, and many more school events. We wish her a happy retirement with her family. My second is Donna Delmore, which is very close to me, having worked under her husband as a captain for the Patterson Fire Department. Mrs. Delmore has been a part of the foundation of Wayne Hills High School, and specifically the English Department, for the past 21 years. Her passion for literature, writing, and journalism have led a generation of students into developing a deep understanding of those subjects, and many of them have gone on to careers in communications, media, and news industries. She transformed the Patriot Press into a modern newsroom, taking it from a four-printed editions to continuously breaking news format of an online publication. Throughout the past few years, her journalism skills have also helped her to transform our traditional morning announcements into a hybrid video morning announcement series through working with her counterpart in our television production courses. To cap off her career, she was selected as Wayne Hills Teacher of the Year. Her presence throughout the building and the district will be greatly missed. We wish her the best in retirement, now you can enjoy yours with your husband. Say hello to Momo for me.
Thank you, Mr. Duffy. Well, I have the honor and privilege of reading the last one. John Meso joined the Wayne Township Public School community as the Director of Facilities in the fall of 2009. He came with a breadth of experience in providing leadership for facilities, planning, and development, and an extensive background in post-secondary facilities management. During his time in the Wayne Schools, Mr. Meso demonstrated his commitment to our schools and community by maintaining the safest and most pristine facilities possible. He worked tirelessly and around-the-clock, and will be remembered for sleeping with his phone on his chest and one eye open, just in case there was an emergency requiring his attention. Whether it was monitoring a snowstorm and planning for snow removal, or tracking local power outages that might impact our schools, he offered ongoing communication with the administration so that we were always fully aware and informed with the most up-to-date information. Mr. Meso will always be remembered for the many facilities projects where he did everything, from setting a vision, planning, providing oversight while construction was in progress, to organizing a ribbon-cutting ceremony to celebrate the completion. His attention to each detail was impeccable, and he always strived for perfection. What many will remember about John is his humility. Although he was the driving force behind the many facilities projects that were completed under his leadership, Mr. Meso would rather plan the ribbon-cutting event and help others celebrate as opposed to taking any credit for himself. You would often find Mr. Meso strolling the grounds or hallways in our many schools with our administrators to hear their ideas for improving our school facilities and keeping current with the latest trends, technology and innovations in education. Some of the projects Mr. Meso will best be remembered for include the development of our very own Wayne Township Learning Center, a renovated space where our staff can come together to share ideas, participate in professional development training, or work together on curriculum development and related projects. Mr. Meso has also worked to maintain and keep our top-rated high schools on the cutting edge with renovations to our science labs and new turf fields. This past year, we opened the Early Childhood Center at Preakness School, which was a result of a year's worth of planning and renovations to restore an older space to the progressive new preschool we now have in place for our pre-K population. Improving energy efficiency was another area where Mr. Meso worked hard and made great strides in our district. His commitment to our Energy Savings Improvement Plan resulted in improved air quality and upgraded HVAC systems, and what will add up to millions of dollars in energy savings. His work in this area also contributed to the Wayne Township Public Schools receiving multiple sustainable jersey for schools, grants, and awards. In the wake of an undefeated, undetected, I'm sorry, burst pipe and extensive water damage at Skylar Colfax Middle School, Mr. Meso immediately started work to limit firm there damage and worked to restore full access to the building. Then he worked to transform the affected classrooms from 1960s-era learning spaces to modern 21st-century classrooms. Mr. Meso's most noteworthy recent accomplishment includes the planning and preparation for our return to school. multiple sustainable jersey for schools, grants, and awards. In the wake of an undefeated, undetected, I'm sorry, burst pipe and extensive water damage at Skylar Colfax Middle School, Mr. Meso immediately started work to limit further damage and worked to restore full access to the building. Then he worked to transform the affected classrooms from 1960s-era learning spaces to modern 21st-century classrooms. Mr. Meso's most noteworthy recent accomplishment includes the planning and preparation for our return to school during the unforeseen COVID-19 pandemic. Mr. Meso had the foresight to consider all of the necessary preparations, protective gear and cleaning supplies that would be needed to safely reopen our schools this past fall. Without his careful and organized planning and preparing, our schools would not have been able to safely reopen for our students and staff last September 8th. We are truly grateful for all of Mr. Meso's hard work last summer to prepare our facilities for one of the most challenging back-to-school openings we will likely ever experience. In short, Mr. Meso made his mark in the Wayne Township Public Schools. His diligence, perseverance, and true care for our schools and the Wayne School's community have amounted to more than the many facilities improvements he carefully led. His commitment cemented a culture of great pride in our schools. Anyone who spends their days as a student or employee in any of our Wayne Schools, visits our town, or considers moving into Wayne will undoubtedly note that our schools are well-cared for. We wish Mr. Meso the best of luck in his retirement and future endeavors. He will be able to dedicate quality time to his loving wife, children, and grandchildren. On behalf of the board, I want to thank Mr. Meso. I can just still see him strolling through rooms, and he could never walk into one without darting his eyes up, down, right, left, to make sure that everything was perfect. He will be hard, missed, and very hard to replace. Thank you, John. Okay. I made it. So we're on to our second public portion. This portion of the meeting is open to citizens for comment on any topic. Residents are to state their names, addresses, and subject matter. Comments may be limited to five minutes per person. Members of the public are discouraged from speaking negatively about an employer or a student. The board bears no responsibility for comments made by the public. Comments regarding employees or students cannot be legally responded to by the board. Other comments may be responded to tonight or subsequent meetings. Can I get a mover? Mr. Giordano, Mr. Pavlak?
Um, hi, Katie. Clock, uh, 34 Hellcrest Drive. Um, I'd just like to bring attention, um, to the board as well as to, I guess, remind, because I think I previously stated this in a few meetings ago. Um, the Society of Indian Psychologists said in 1999 that indigenous mascots, indigenous mascots do harm and promote stereotypes of indigenous peoples. Um, the American Psychological Association has, has recommended that all indigenous mascots be retired since 2005. Similar resolutions have been adopted by the North American Society for the Sociology of Sport, the American Sociological Association, the American Counseling Association, and the American Anthropological Association. The N double A C P has called for the end of the use of indigenous mascots since 1999. The Commission of, on civil right, the U.S. Commission on Civil Rights released an advisory opinion calling for an end to the use of these mascots in schools. In 2012, a United Nations, um, expert on human rights of indigenous peoples said indigenous mascots obscures understanding of the reality of Native Americans today and instead helps to keep alive racially, racially discriminatory attitudes. And several other New Jersey schools are retiring their indigenous mascots. I think this is important to remember what, um, these experts have said for over a decade as we continue to move forward. Thank you for all that you do, and I wish everybody who is retiring a very happy retirement. Thank you.
Madam President, do you know other handkerchiefs?
Second?
Mrs. Cher? Mr. Pavlak? Old business? New business? Mr. Pavlak?
To all our retirees, thank you for your dedicated service to the district. When you look at the number of years that these individuals have given to our district, to our students, it is a phenomenal number, and they will all be missed. Uh, Mr. Meso, congratulations on your retirement. I don't miss our 5 o'clock phone calls in the morning, snowy days, uh, going back and forth on how the roads were. John was the reason a lot of things got done in this district, and our buildings are in the shape they are. And we are in a really good place as far as facilities go, and he is the one who has led the department over the years, oh, in major projects that we have done and major cost savings to this district and the taxpayers of Wayne. Thank you very much.
Mrs. Cher?
I just wanted to say, Ms. Dawn, I wanted to say congratulations to all the retirees. We have a lot, some big shoes to fill, um, but I wish you all the best of luck in the future. Uh, I also wanted to say thank you to the P T O presidents for all your hard work. I know it's a tough job, and I appreciate that you're willing to do it. And thank you to our student representatives. Have a nice day.
Anyone else? Well, it's a bittersweet night. We wish everyone a happy and healthy retirement, but you will be missed, and we thank you all for your service. Same to our P T O presidents and our student representatives. Thank you. Good night. Can I get a move to close? Mr. Pavlak, Mr. Giordano? Have a good evening. Thank you.